Progress and we are ready to go. Okay. Calling us to order the South River Mayor and Borough Council Meeting Number Two held today on January tenth of two thousand and twenty-two. Statement of notice of publication, Madam Clerk.
In compliance with chapter two thirty-one of Public Law of nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building sixty-one Main Street South River has been published in. Actually, and via video has been published in the Home News Tribune on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, posted on the Municipal Building Bulletin Board. The Borough website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building, and pursuant to the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash eight B. I've changed it so many times for the girls. I don't know if it's ever Sophia Cooper, Christina, Maria. Everyone, please mute yourself. There's a meeting going on. Pursuant to the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash eight B, this meeting is being held by means of use. Electronic communications equipment due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, no members of the public shall be permitted to physically attend the meeting originally scheduled to be held at. The Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River. The public, however, is invited to attend the meeting electronically, and the public will have the opportunity to speak.
And of course, the borough is using this format in an effort to mitigate the chance of exposure to COVID nineteen as. This is what is the members of the council desired, and so we are here. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Krenzel.
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Here.
Councilman Gindi.
Here.
Councilman Gertchinsky.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Mira.
Madam Clerk, she just typed in the chat bar that she was having trouble hearing. She may have hopped off to hop back on.
Okay.
I don't see her right now, but she did put in the chat bar, sorry, having trouble hearing.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Olivera.
Here.
And Council President Seola.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let us have a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God.
You let us have a moment of silence. Your thoughts and prayers, please remember Beth Farmheim, who has worked on the Community Garden, Frank Mula. And Emmy Award-winning. Writer from South River. And Brian Sicknick, who just had the anniversary of his passing one year ago. Thank you. There are no proclamations, honor, awards, or presentations. There's no agenda sessions. There is an ordinance, second reading, public hearing, but I believe that Mr. Seola has a motion concerning that due to insufficient time for publication.
Yes, Mayor, due to insufficient time for publication ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash one for second reading and public hearing. Should be carried over to the January twenty-fourth meeting at seven o'clock. Shortly thereafter, at the Criminal Justice Building on sixty-one Main Street, South River, or remotely via Zoom.
A second up.
Motion by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindi. All in favor? Hence, the eyes have it, we'll revisit this on January the twenty-fourth. We do have an ordinance, first reading by title only, two dash oh-two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the Borough, South River County, Middlesex State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough, South River, so as to amend chapter one fifty-five entitled fees. Regarding athletic lighting fees, may I have a motion to introduce, to accept as introduced?
Motion.
I move that we council pass ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero-two on its first reading by title only. And that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law, with a second reading to be held on. January the twenty-fourth at seven P M, or thereafter by video conference via Zoom, or in the Criminal Justice Building located at sixty-one Main Street. South River, New Jersey.
Motion has been made by Mr. Seola. We'll give the second to Mr. Gindi, who had done that roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindi.
Yes.
Councilman Gertchinsky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
I'm here. I'm sorry, I missed the first. Didn't hear you guys before, so I went on my phone instead.
How do you vote for introducing ordinance twenty-two oh-two?
Yes, I just didn't hear you. That's why I didn't know if I could.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you. Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
And Council President Seola.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good then. We'll revisit this on the January the twenty-fourth. We'll have a public hearing at that time. Moving on to the agenda with the reports, Mr. Koch, how are you this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doing better, thank you. Hope everybody's well. Not a lot of change in our report. The two thousand and twenty, twenty-one roads, they're on hold until the warm weather breaks in the spring. Nothing, no change in the twenty-twenty-two local aid program. You receive the grant. When you're ready, you can start putting financing in place for that. The substation work is moving along. Really, what's left is the feeder line that sweeps. And well, number two replacement. But Tricia is still doing their work, but we did submit the D P water allocation minor modification permitted. So we'll just be waiting to hear from the D P regarding that.
You ready?
Yes, Councilwoman.
The D E P. Had put out that they have water quality restoration grants. And also, they're putting out a grant for brownfields. Is that something that we would be able to apply for?
What was the first one, Councilwoman?
Water quality restoration grants.
I will look into that tomorrow for you. I wasn't aware of that, but I'll talk to the head of our water department tomorrow and find out.
Then the other one that the D P had put in was for brownfields.
I don't know that we have any projects, properties that we're going to clean up. In order for redevelopment, but I can also ask our environmental division if there's any insight on that for you as well. I can report on those for the next meeting.
Okay, I saw that the D P was gonna do like a webinar on one of them. I was gonna try to get on to that.
Great. If you see that, would you please forward it to me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you very much.
Alright, anyone else?
I also have one more thing, Mr. Mayor. Now that it's getting cold and the water's freezing, I just want you all as council members to. Drive down Prentice Avenue on the corner of. The water freezes over there and it is very dangerous. I don't know if. You guys want pictures. I've had residents send me pictures. In the last few years, and I know now that it's pretty cold. I'm sure it's freezing over there, too. Just to keep in mind, Mayor, the last meeting that you were not at, we discussed maybe adding that on to the roads program. To put out the bid altogether, so I don't know if we're still going ahead with that. Don't want it to be forgotten.
That would be more than just paving. That would be road reconstruction, I would think, Bruce, wouldn't it?
It's gonna include drainage, Mayor, which would be aligned to pick up all the some pumps that discharge to the street and pipe it underground. Yes.
Much like they did on West Groviock and Franklin.
Correct, sir.
So, okay. Anything else, Councilwoman?
Well, that's it.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, everybody.
I did see Mr. Zanga here somewhere.
I'm here.
No, okay.
Yes, Mary. The only thing I have is just in the process of closing out two thousand twenty-one's records and filing all the reports with the state. That's it.
Okay, anything for Joseph? No, okay then, very good. Adriano, how are you this evening?
Good, Matt. One thing with the recycling. They had issues with guys being out. I spoke to them today. There was about ten, roughly about ten to twelve streets that were left. Solterra told me that, you know, they were down guys from COVID, and they're gonna let me know hopefully tomorrow, the next day, if they could come back and recover it. And if they can, we'll put a message out either way to the residents. About the recycling.
Now, okay. This rate, we're almost just a week away from it, but okay, fine. Anything for Adriano? No, okay then, very good. Thank you, sir. Our chief is not with us tonight. There's been a death in his wife's family. So I will go to Madam Clerk. Anything to report from you, Susan?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, then. Andrea, anything to report?
Nothing to nightmare.
Okay. Arthur, anything?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay, then. Then going to our governing body, okay then. Well, we're all in different places, so how about if we start with you, Mr. Gertchinsky? You're the first one up next to my picture, so anything to report from your various. Committees and such.
Nothing at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, then. Mrs. Ballas.
Just to note, the Rabies Clinic that was scheduled for this month is postponed until March. They're gonna be checking with the vet to get available dates. And I would suggest we do what we had to do last time and waive any late fees that people incurred with not getting their licenses. Registered in time, so I would like to have that. Taken care of if we can.
We can put that on for the next meeting, have a resolution to that effect. Very good. Mr. Seola.
Thank you. E D C will be meeting on the nineteenth. On the fifteenth, I'll be walking the town with the Director of the Mettutchen Downtown Alliance. Going over some ideas and some suggestions that he would have with the redevelopment of the downtown area. And with the cold that's happening, please keep an eye on your neighbors, especially if they're elderly. Make sure that they're okay. And just watch out for them with this cold weather approaching. Thank you, Mayor, for all you have.
Thank you. Mr. Gindi.
Thank you. Our next meetings are coming up. For Municipal Alliance will be tomorrow. The next planning board meeting will be the eighteenth of this month, and the next zoning board meeting will be the twenty-fifth of this month. The planning and the zoning are both going Zoom. Municipal Alliance are actually meeting in person. Most of our meetings, I believe, for the next maybe month or two will be Zoom due to the pandemic. Spiking back up, so look for the information on our website if you are interested and dialing in. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Olivera.
The Rec Advisory Board unfortunately was not able to have their meeting on the fourth of January, the first Tuesday of the bump. Laquisha is working on trying to have a reorganization meeting as soon as possible during the month of January. As soon as it's coordinated with the staff, the members will make sure to have it posted, so anyone can attend that. That would like. I also want to congratulate the Board of Ed, Renee, Lisa, and Nicole on being reappointed. And Councilwoman Mara is now in charge of the library, but they officially received word that they. They were awarded a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar grant by the governor, so kudos to Evolina and her team for working hard to get that grant.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Mara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to apologize. I was having some issues with my iPad trying to sign in before. But I had to switch my phone. The Environmental. Shade Tree Commission will be meeting. Via Zoom this Thursday at six thirty P M. Please watch out for the link as it will be popping up soon. And I'm hoping the library board will contact me, contact me soon to see how they'll be doing their meetings. I know they've also cut down their hours at. The library, so if you're looking or interested to go to the library, just make sure you check their website because they were having some staff issues. That's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, no need to apologize. I mean, with our beloved technology nowadays, we know what happens. Always, it's a great classic of the poor attorney trying to go to a settlement conference with the judge, and he can't get. You know, he looks like a cat, and he just, he couldn't, no matter what he did with the computer, he couldn't get out of it, so. It happens, not to worry. I have no official reports at this time, so we are going to go on to our agenda to public comments. You'll have ten minutes to speak. Please give your name and address, and you can do this by one of two ways. You can literally raise your hand. Or you can raise your hand using Zoom. Susan, the clerk is looking out, and we will wait a moment for that. Okay, on first call. Second call. Third call.
Motion to close.
Second. Been made by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Seola. All in favor? Against the eyes have it. Going on with the agenda, the mayoral appointments. There are various appointments to the Environmental Shade Tree Commission, Human Relations Commission, Mayor's Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities. Mayor's Advisory Council on Aging, Mayor Advisory Committee on Housing and Community Program Programs, as well as the Planning Board. The three members will be appointed. What you see in your agenda concerning Resolution Thirty will be the appointment of Mr. Gindi. As the council representative. Moving on to our council resolution, Madam Clerk, where everyone.
Where is Resolution twenty-two oh-one authorizes the Borough Council utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial. Nature at one time. Now, therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved that the below-listed result, that the listed resolutions are hereby adopted. By the Borough Council in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon. Hey. Resolution ten, except December twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one, regular and executive session councilmen, it's eleven, authorize a borough clerk to administer all. Twenty-twenty-two legal games of chance licenses. Twelve, approve New Jersey League of Municipality Conference attendance. Thirteen, cash management plan. Fourteen, signatories on financial documents. Fifteen, interest on delinquent taxes. Sixteen, authorize execution of NJDEP sanitary sewer extension application. Seventeen, appoint borough auditor. Eighteen, appoint public defender. Nineteen, appoint special tax council. Twenty, appoint bond council. Twenty-one, appoint employment slash labor council. Twenty-two, appoint electric attorney. Twenty-three, appoint electrical engineer. Twenty-four, appoint insurance risk manager. Twenty-five, appoint health benefits risk manager. Twenty-six, appoint board of health members. Twenty-seven, appoint cultural arts and heritage commission members. Twenty-eight, appoint human relations committee members. Twenty-nine, appoint members to municipal alliance. Thirty is under the mayor's appointment. Thirty-one, appoint zoning board of adjustment members. Thirty-two, appoint Middlesex County Transportation Coordinating Committee Representative, which is the mayor-designee. Thirty-three, appoint watershed. Management Area Nine Representative. Thirty-four, appoint Middlesex County Urban Forestry Advisory Committee Representative. Thirty-five, appoint Public Power Association of New Jersey Representatives. Thirty-six. Authorized power purchase and sale agreements. Thirty-seven, appoint Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund Representatives. Thirty-eight, appoint Central Jersey Health Insurance Fund Commissioners. Thirty-nine, appoint public agency-compliant officer. Forty, appoint Middlesex County Solid Waste Advisory Committee Representative. Forty-one, appoint Fire Police for South River Fire Department. Forty-two, appoint twenty-twenty-two school crossing guards. Forty-three, appoint special law enforcement officers class one. Forty-four, appoint special law enforcement officers class three. Forty-five, appoint local emergency planning committee. Forty-six, appoint recycling coordinator. Forty-seven, appoint South River Free Public Library Board of Trustee members. Forty-eight, appoint energy access automated system support. Forty-nine, appoint information technology services. Fifty, appoint members to Economic Development Commission. Fifty-one, appoint pen precision. Sorry, precision analytical services. Fifty-two, appoint agro-environmental and laboratory services. Fifty-three, appoint environmental shade tree commission members. Fifty-four, appoint advisory board on aging members. Fifty-five, appoint advisory board on persons with disability members. Fifty-six, appoint advisory committee for community block grant development. Fifty-seven, appoint members to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Fifty-eight, appoint cable television advisory board member. Fifty-nine, authorize carryover buyback unused vacation time. Sixty, authorize sale of ambulance. Sixty-one, authorize January tenth utility refunds. Sixty-two, authorize surplus ambulance equipment sale schedule A. Sixty-three, authorize surplus ambulance equipment sale schedule B. Sixty-four, authorize surplus ambulance equipment sale schedule C. Sixty-five, authorize the bills and claims list. And sixty-six, authorize February twenty-twenty-two tax payment to the South River Board of Education.
Motion.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Seola. Remember that Resolution Thirty is remaining in that we will have. Appointing Mr. Gindi as the council liaison to the planning board. Okay, having that roll call.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Resolution twenty-eight. The commission members, well, the Human Relation Commission members.
Right.
He still had me down, and I believe he gave that to Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, my mistake. I apologize. Amend Resolution twenty-eight as Councilwoman Ballas as the liaison.
Accepted by the movement and seconded.
Second.
And you agree, Mr. Gindi?
Yes, I do, okay.
Roll call, Councilwoman Ballas.
I, yes, but I'm standing from twenty twenty-two dash forty-two.
Thank you. Councilman Gindi.
Yes, abstaining from forty-one.
Councilman Gertchinsky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
And Council President Seola.
Yes, would abstain from forty-one.
Thank you all.
Very good then. There's no new business. Nothing's being read separate. That brings us to our governing body comments. Go in the same order I did before, Mr. Gertchinsky.
Thank you, Mayor. With the cold weather upon us, excuse me, with the cold weather upon us, please take care of everyone out there, too. Watch your walkways and what have you, too, for ice or any other buildup, so anyone walking, and we have quite a few residents that do walk for exercise. Also, your hydrants, please keep them clear so our first responders can get by and use it if necessary, hopefully not. And also with the coming of the new year and everything, please check your smoke alarm batteries and also your CO2. With that, I thank you, Mayor, and have a pleasant evening. Stay warm, folks. Take care.
Thank you. Mrs. Ballas.
Just a couple of things. I'd like to thank the DPW for their job on the snow removal the other day. It seemed I drove around after that and the roads looked really good. The other thing, seeing that I live up by the school, there are many curb. Your dog signs, and I noticing people are not observing them. I've seen the children step in, but they really don't want to step in before they go into the school. So I would urge people, please, please adhere to those because it's just, it's just a safety measure, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Seola.
Thank you, Mayor. The only I want to say is, I want to thank Age and his guys for a great job they did with the snow removal. I drove around afterwards, it cleared up. Curb to curb. Blacktop was showing. They did a fantastic job. So again, Age, please extend my thanks to all the guys who were out plowing. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Gindi.
Thank you. Once again, Age, I had the opportunity to actually go out with him. We did point out a lot of areas where there's a lot of ice buildup. Julie, I know you brought up the Prentice Avenue. There's so many more other places that Age will be taking care of it with the Salters. I know that he's concerned about the ice buildup, and there's, you know. It's been going on for years. Age, great job on the snow removal. Once again, I know we got another supposedly storm coming up this year, this week. We are, I am working on bringing back testing to the residents. I know COVID has spiked in a very bad way. Along with testing, so look forward to seeing on the website. I will be bringing it back. This week is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. When you see a police officer or anybody that happens to be law enforcement, thank them. It means a lot to them. It's a job that is not easy to do. And this brings me back, brings me to a South River resident that unfortunately lost his life one year ago, which was the Capitol Police Officer Brian Sicknick. You know, cowards took his life. That's, that's the best way to look at it. And unfortunately, we lose sight of their job and how important it is to us, and what it means for us when we have a problem. Who do you call? You call a police officer. So remember, remember him and thank law enforcement whenever you see him. And last, Happy New Year. Stay safe. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Olivera.
As everyone mentioned, I just want to thank Adriano and the DPW for a job well done during the snowstorm. I know the last couple of meetings I mentioned. The need for volunteers. I believe the Rec Advisory Board member, the board, right now, we're short three positions. If anyone is interested in getting involved, please let myself or any council or the mayor know. This way, we can fill. Volunteer spots that are available on the board. With that, Mayor, that's all I have.
And thank you. And Councilwoman Mara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start off by giving my condolences to the Framheim family. Beth Framheim passed away last month. She was a retired teacher here at South River. And also devoted many hours to lead the community garden that we have here in town. Will be very missed. So my condolences to her family and. Just another reminder with the community garden, it's the beginning of the year, so please look out. They will start. Sending reminders of when they will restart. And just getting everybody prepared for the springtime. In past, we've also done. Sort of group meetings at the library. I don't know if that'll be happening this year, but just to keep a look at on Facebook for the South River Community Garden. One year, January sixth, we do also remember our officer Sicknick. Who was from South River. And I just want to say thank you to all the South River students for inspiring others to never forget one of our own here from South River. As we know here on council, a lot of the National Honor Society members decided to do park cleanups. Or garden memorial right here in our park, so just thank you again for them reminding us. How to live, relive for our residents here. And I would hope that maybe next year, Mr. Mayor, we can request, or maybe on January sixth, lower our flag. Just to, once again, remember and.
No, they can't.
Remind our residents about.
How come?
Other than that, I would also like to say that TV thirty-five, I know now we're on Zoom, but Sally is recording these. Meetings for TV thirty-five. If you cannot find TV thirty-five on our website, sometimes it's hard to get our meetings down. We do have a YouTube channel for our meetings, so if you look up. South River TV thirty-five on YouTube, you will find all of our meetings there. I'm excited to get started this year. I'm excited to get started this year with the committees and commissions that you gave me, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually a little glad that we're gonna go back to Zoom, especially with our committees and stuff. It is getting cold. And with everything happening, I think it's a good idea for now, so thank you for doing that. You know, I showed up at the ordinance by title only for ordinance twenty-two thousand and twenty-two dash two. I just want to say again, we're bringing this up. We saw back in December how many residents were not for this ordinance. How would it affect a big part of the community here in South River and the way our youth programs work? I also have been reaching out. Going back to the minutes from the Rec Department and the Parks and Rec meetings. From two thousand and seventeen, we had a report done on all of our parks from a company. Just to get an estimate on some of the, the work that needed to be done on our fields, on our soccer fields, on our baseball fields. And it was a. It was quite a bit of money that needed to be done, and I'm curious to, you know, later find out. How much of that work was actually done? I know it was a proposal from a different company, but it was still stuff. That they saw that our parks needed for improvement, and I'm bringing this up now, Mayor, because if we haven't done any of the improvement. From five years ago. How are we gonna charge people for using our fields? So please take that into consideration. I would say. Reach out to see what of these items have been done. I have the report from Mr. Landenski today. I'm looking over at it and I'm just curious to know what we have done from that report. And how can we sit here and want to charge for our fields if we haven't improved them enough to be usable in that way, so. That's all I have, but I know we'll, we'll be discussing it further at our next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and so we shall. I would just like to say thank you to all of the people who during the snowstorm took their cars off the road. By doing that, you made it so much easier to clean and they could do a better job. Even if you're not on a snow emergency street, I know around me, that's what the people did. They took them and they shoved their cars onto their driveways and lawns and whatever. And they were able to do a very good job, and then they put the cars back on the road, so it worked out well. We are going to go now to. Into executive session. And I believe that, I don't know. Julie, Mary, do you want to still talk about? I didn't respond to you, but do you still want to talk about personnel? Or are you satisfied with the answer I gave you?
I'm satisfied.
Okay, then. Then there'll just be one thing to discuss, and we are going to go into executive session. We will come out. There will be no business taken afterwards, so the meeting is essentially done, but we will come back to this meeting. And we will then close it out. So going into executive session. Madam Clerk, read the resolution.
Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash sixty-seven, authorizing entrance into executive session. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mrs. Ballas.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gertchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to mention also, also I have to shut down the meeting so we can go into exec, but we will come back.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gertchinsky, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Hence, the eyes have it. Is there anything else to come before us? Our next meeting will be in Zoom also. I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Seola, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All against, the eyes have it. We stand adjourned for two weeks. Thank you, folks.
Good night all. Good night all. Take care.
Good night.